Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Mr. Fagutur, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Jurich, Mr. Coniker, Mr. Lesby,
Here.
Ms. Metzler.
Here.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
Ms. Prickett, Mr. Zimmerman. Three present, uh, six present, three absent.
Thank you very much. Next, on the agenda is approval of minutes of the Facility Committee meeting and the work session of March 10, 2025, the Policy Committee meeting, the Finance Committee meeting, and the regular meeting of March 17, 2025, and the Education Committee meeting of March 24, 2025. Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is visitors' comments for agenda items only. Not seen any movement, we'll move on. Presentations and discussions, we're looking at a budget update.
Um, so this is a proposed budget analysis for 25, 26 for the school district. Finance Committee has already seen this proposal, um, so, but I'll go through it again for, um, public record. So, our general fund revenue, um, comes from three different sources, uh, local, state, and federal. Sixty-six percent of our budget comes from our local effort, and that's taxes raised from real estate assessments, taxes from transfers, um, EIT, um, EIN. So, that's, um, accounts for forty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. State is our second largest supporter of our budget, uh, thirty-two percent. Uh, roughly, we're expected twenty-one, uh, million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand for, um, the fiscal year 25, 26. Um, the smallest bucket comes from federal, which is just over a million dollars. Costs for about two percent of our budget. Another source that we don't have listed on here, but, uh, for this year, uh, has generated a substantial amount of, uh, income for us, has been the, the money that we have, uh, raised from grants, um, and also from interest earned on our money. So that would be added to, uh, our total revenues. Um, I don't count it, uh, because I like to be conservative, um, and that can't be guaranteed. Um, the other funds that we have listed on, uh, on here are for the most part, uh, guaranteed to be, are expected revenues. Next slide, if we look at our comparison over, uh, the last couple, uh, last year, this year, and proposed, it shows that there is a, an increase, obviously, um, from 24 through the current year through 26, but the actual size of the buckets, um, the percentages for where the money is coming from relatively don't change. So we're holding fast as to where the money is coming from. The next slide gives you more detail, and I apologize that it's very hard to read, um, but, um, the board members have the, the line items. It, it actually breaks down in a little bit more detail where the money's coming from in each one of the three buckets, um, local, state, and federal. So expenditures, um, as expected, the largest expenditure for the district comes from salaries and benefits. Purchased services includes the next biggest bucket, and that includes tuition to charter schools, which accounts for over three million dollars of our budget. Supplies account for three percent, um, other expenses is the remaining twelve percent. Again, this is a balanced budget, so our operating total expenditures, uh, will match our revenue of sixty-six million, five hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Expenditures by object code, again, we're looking at, um, last year to this year, to the proposed budget. There is a four percent increase overall in the total budget, um, but the bucket sizes, again, uh, are relatively stable uh, as to where the expenses are going. Uh, again, salaries and benefits is the most, followed by purchased services, which again includes your tuition costs to charter schools. If we look at expenditures a different way, which is by our function code, instruction of our students accounts for fifty-nine percent of our, our, um, our expenditures. Supportive services is twenty-nine percent, financing is eleven, and operations or non-instructional, um, only accounts for two percent of our budget. So, um, even though we've been, uh, investing in our facilities and our upgrades, it's still only roughly two percent of the total budget. Again, if we look at the, the actual to the current, um, to the proposed budget, um, our bucket sizes are, again, relatively the same, um, accounting for, uh, a three to four percent increase. Again, this is, uh, another breakdown of the buckets themselves with a little bit more detail as to what exactly are, are those expenses. As I pointed out, one of the, the highest ones, uh, outside of salaries and benefits is our charter school expense. This graph depicts our general fund balance, uh, comparison, uh, actuals for 24, our current, and our proposed budget. We have, um, a very healthy, uh, fund balance, uh, right now. As of June thirtieth of 2024, there was roughly a little over thirteen million dollars. We added another three million dollars to that fund balance in November, uh, so we're sitting at roughly sixteen million dollars in the fund balance. This, this shows the, the actual budgets of, for this current year and the projected, giving you a percentage of change. As we move forward, um, we'll be able to give you projections, uh, for 27, 28, 29, and 30. We're not there yet, um, but, um, at least you can see our proposed budget as is compared to our, our current budget. Uh, and as you can see, there's roughly three to four percent increases. And this is just the summary page. Uh, we're proposing a sixty-six million, five hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollar budget. Um, revenues and expenses are balanced. Uh, our fund balance as of June thirtieth, as I said, was roughly almost fourteen million dollars. Um, general revenue from our local sources is roughly forty-four million dollars. Revenue from our state is twenty-one point five million, and, uh, our, one of our greatest expenses is our salaries at twenty-three million. Expenses for best, benefits is fourteen point six million, and we're paying five point eight, uh, million towards our debt services. And that's our budget proposal.
So tell us about your, uh, information and knowledge regarding the state budget process for this year compared to last year or whatever.
So, there's been changes in the state budget process as far as how they calculate. There is what is called a basic educational fund. That is an amount that is, that stagnant from year to year. In other words, each district can expect to receive that base amount. On top of that, they have changed how they allocate the remaining bucket of money, um, and that is based on a number of factors, including our ADM, um, our local effort, our medium income. There is an entire formula that took us half the morning to, to actually go through. Uh, Dr. Lever and I attended a, a whole course on, on how to calculate, uh, the amount that's anticipated from the state revenue. It's very complex. We also do qualify for, um, uh, another eighty thousand dollars because of our millage rate to, to help offset some of the tax increases, um, that we have, uh, in the district. According to the formula, we have kind of maxed out, uh, our local effort and what we can tax people. So we're, we need to, to look at alternative funding when possible. The same type of formula applies to special ed funding, which is another component of your state money. Again, that has been revamped and reworked again to try to make it fairer across the board. I don't know that that actually succeeded in doing that, but, um, it's, it's a good, I guess it's a, an attempt at, at doing that for this year. But, um, overall, um, for Octorara, it did result in an increase in revenue to the district. So we were net positive on, uh, as a result of this new, new funding.
Yeah, if it holds.
If it holds, of course. Unfortunately, we as a school district under school code are required to pass our budget before the state is required to pass theirs, so we kind of have to assume, make some assumptions of what's going to happen, and, and do our best guess at, at what, how much we're going to be getting from the state in reality.
Yeah, it's, um, we at least have some better metrics now to use that when we hear percentages, because it's, it's going to come from basically three areas that we would be impacted. Our basic ed funding, our special ed funding, and, um, well, I don't remember the third area. Uh, special ed and basic ed are, are the ones that are really, the, that's, that's the larger portions of money. So we at least have, PASBO provided us with some worksheets that as soon as we hear percentages, um, they've taken all formulas and built them in so that we can get a sense of what's coming. Nobody really believes that the budget can be passed as it is proposed. So we, we really don't know, and we don't know where they're going to take it from. We've built the budget conservatively so that if we took a big hit, it would, it would change some of our numbers, but we, we believe we would be okay, even if there was some drastic reductions in places. Drastic being probably tens of thousands, not, 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 not millions.
The percentage increase in our budget is historically what it's been, um, over the last ten years, between three and four percent. So, um, I'm confident that, that our, our numbers are, are good, are conservative enough, uh, that we should be able to sustain them.
Thank you. Next, information items. A, the following are voluntary transfers effective with the start of the 2025-2026 school year due to building realignment. Lauren Brotman, from autism learning support teacher at the OIS to seventh grade learning support teacher at the OMS. Catherine Stanton, from eighth grade special education teacher at the OMS to seventh grade special education teacher at the OMS. Kathleen Heller, from eighth grade special education teacher at the OMS to learning support teacher at the OHS. Danielle Carmella, from seventh grade special education teacher at the OMS to eighth grade special ed, special education teacher at the OMS. Amanda King, from fifth grade ELA teacher at the OIS to sixth grade social studies teacher at the OMS. Stephanie Noos, from sixth grade math and social studies teacher at the OIS to sixth grade social studies teacher at the OMS. Kelly Doughty, from seventh grade special education teacher at the OMS to eighth grade special education teacher at the OMS. Barry Bard, from fifth grade math and science teacher at the OIS to eighth grade social studies teacher at the OMS. Kevin Ruth, from fifth grade science teacher at the OIS to sixth grade science teacher at the OMS. Robin Lewis, from fifth grade math and social studies teacher at the OIS to sixth grade math teacher at the OMS. Laura Fisher, from fourth grade self-contained classroom teacher at the OES to fourth grade ELA teacher at the OIS. Caitlin Craciolo, from sixth grade ELA teacher at the OIS to fourth grade teacher at the OIS. Jillian Mattis, from fifth grade ELA teacher at the OIS to second grade teacher at the PLC. Treasurer's report that the Octorara Board of School Directors approved the general fund report for period ending March thirty-one, 2025. Need a motion?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
I'm, just a really small thing, wondering if we need to amend possibly Barry Bard from fifth grade. Is he math and social studies at the OIS and not math and science? Does anybody want to confirm that, and is that something we should amend? So, small change, but Barry Bard from fifth grade math and social studies teacher at the OIS instead of how it says he's math and science teacher.
I think we can handle that in the minutes.
It says Barry Bard from fifth grade math and science teacher, just amend it to say Barry Bard from fifth grade math and social studies teacher.
Okay, um, I think, did we get a second on the treasurer's report? Need a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Business managers report.
Uh, I asked the board to approve the list of bills for payment in the amount of three million, three hundred and one thousand, two dollars and nineteen cents.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, on to recommended action items. The first three, A, B, and C, are roll call. So I will read them, and then Jill will, uh, call the roll. A, that the Octorara Board of School Directors approve 2025-2026 Chester County Intermediate Unit Core Services budget in the amount of forty-one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, and seventy-two dollars. Need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jurich. Mr. Ms. Pick, Ms. Prickett? I'm sorry? Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Ms. Metzler? Six yes, three absent.
B, that the Octorara Board of School Directors approve the 2025-2026 Chester County Intermediate Unit Occupational Education Budget in the amount of thirty-four million, five hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. Need a motion?
Ms. Metzler? Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Ms. Prickett? Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Jurich? Six yes, three absent.
C, that the Octorara Board of School Directors approve the resolution for the proposed final general fund budget for the 2025-2026 school year. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Prickett? Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Ms. Metzler? Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Jurich? Mr. Hurley? Six yes, three absent.
Thank you. Uh, last week we covered items D through Y, but we have to note the following change, changes. To item T, Cyon Brown, effective date April fifteenth, 2025. Changes to item U, Danielle Carmella, mentor DeAndre Clark, point three two points at six hundred and twenty dollars each for a total of one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents. And William McWaters, mentor George Constantanu, hope I said that right, two points at six hundred and twenty dollars for a total of one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. With those changes, we need a motion for D through Y.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion's passed.
Sorry, was that to approve the, the changes, or that motion was to approve the changes to D through Y?
That was to approve D through Y.
Oh, I thought that-
Including the changes.
Including the changes. I understand. I apologize. I was wondering if we could pull out item I about the science curriculum.
Pull out item I?
Could I vote separately on item I? Is that possible?
That's a good question. I think we, yeah, I think we did vote on that.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you were approving the change, the amendments to that section, but-
Is there, is there a certain objection or comment you'd like to have noted in the minutes?
Yeah, I didn't think we were at the point where all the information was available, um, to make that decision tonight. There were some questions after, um, the last education committee that I was just asked today, so it wasn't enough time to get the information, um, until the next education committee meeting. Um, there also isn't the final numbers on the cost, so it seemed like maybe that's something we- Um there also isn't the final numbers on the cost, so it seemed like maybe that's something we could wait on, but. If I just gave my vote without realizing it, then I gave my vote without realizing it, but I would just. I can. I can make my questions known.
Kindergarten enrollment is open in the Actuara area school district.
The questions that I'm looking for answers to at the next education committee um are mainly surrounding the pilot for um the mystery science was piloted, in my understanding, two years ago, but is not being used currently. So that just felt like something I'd wanna get teacher feedback on. I know teacher um buy-in is really important with curriculum, so before adopting it, I was just hoping to make sure we had that feedback of why the curriculum isn't being used currently when it was piloted last year before we look at adopting it moving forward, so. That's one answer I would look at before we approve it. Um there also wasn't really any data given for these programs um being proven to show improved student achievement. So I'm hoping to see some of that data. And also then just what the cost is, mostly because I wanna know what resources we are purchasing. Um that we are actually purchasing the resources needed. If, especially the middle school one is really like lab-based, I really just hope that we are like equipping teachers with everything that they need to be able to like jump in on what um goes along with the online resource. I wanna make sure that that's all sorted out, that we are doing that, so. Those are the things I'm hoping to ask um and see moving forward.
Uh I, if it's appropriate, Dr. Schultz is uh prepared to answer some of those questions? Is that okay, Mr. Earl?
Absolutely. Sure, so the um mystery science pilot began about two years ago. Um working with the middle school as well, so there's kind of two different ideas. And with the change from an intermediate school to a middle school and a three-through-five building, you had to adjust a little bit along the way. Um and talking to the teachers and working with the teachers, the Open Say Ed piece for six through eight seems the, the most rigorous, the, the best program that we can provide for them. Uh the opening year startup cost is around thirty thousand dollars. Um that's because a lot of the teacher manuals need to be purchased upfront, a lot of the lab equipment needs to be purchased upfront. That cost should come down quite a bit year over year over year. Thinking about trying to create a K to eight program, one single science program like we have with ELA, there's really aren't many programs that are like that. They're really broken up K to five or middle school and then high school. The one program that we did look at was HMH, and it was very, very tech-centric. And the kids were sitting in their seats, watching videos. And our team just didn't think that was the best way to do science. We really want kids to engage, manipulate, and work with science. Um so we came back, once we kinda made that transition to our three, three-four-five building, looking at the schedule and the amount of time that we have with science, how it syncs up with Amplify, with the, the units of study within Amplify, and how it syncs up with the Lego education that we have in the STEM classroom. The mystery science seemed to be the wisest choice to give the kids the most engagement and hands-on material to do science, to really hit those STEEL standards. Um talking about data, since the STEELS are in, this is the pilot year for the STEELS PSSA data, there isn't a lot of data on these new STEELS-aligned programs because the STEELS PSSA assessment is piloting this year. Um so there's a lot of data out there about how STEAM and hands-on and, and engaging with science um is beneficial for students, but there really isn't anything that's been done to point directly at STEELS in that assessment, because this year is the pilot year. Um so the test very well may change. Sometimes it do, sometimes they don't, we'll, we'll have to see. Um but we've been given our standards and we are picking the programs that we think will match those standards the best that we can, while giving students that engaging science experience that, that our teachers were looking for. Um Open Say Ed, we're looking at, it's a, it's a specific, it's called Carolina. That's because Open Say Ed, the, the, the name comes from that it is open resource. Um but in working with our teachers, we are um contracting with uh the Carolina piece, because they've been able to create really easy-to-follow um teacher guides. Uh the online piece for the online labs, they're able to, um we can buy the bulk lab equipment instead of having a piecemeal, right, which it's just, you know, we're asking teachers to do a lot in their classroom to motivate students, engage students. I don't want them staying up to eleven o'clock at night hanging on Amazon. Um I think it's better for us to spend a little extra money to get all that material, and then they can spend their time using it with their students. So that's the idea behind the Carolina piece. Instead of just doing the open, the open resource piece, where we would be responsible for, for going out and finding all those small little pieces. Um and really, and, and finally, just trying to build a, a K to eight science program that is engaging for the students, that matches the standards so that they are best prepared for them to go off and do wonderful science things in the high school and hopefully in their post-career, if that's something that they would like to do. So hopefully that answered some of the other questions that we had.
I think so. Did I catch it correctly that you're saying it is thirty thousand dollars because we're purchasing the Carolina portion, which does include all of the lab?
Correct. Yes. That's why, that's why there's a, a cost associated, because we're, we're, it's giving us all the lab material. Um and it's also giving us a lot of, all of the teacher guides and all the online piece. We did cut out the workbook piece, so they do come with workbooks for the students to have individual workbooks. And we piloted that in a couple of the units, but the teachers found that the kids were flipping to the back. And when it's a phenomenon-based storyline approach to a science concept, when you go to the very end of the book and you read the last page, it gives away the whole, gives away the whole story. And it's not as much fun when you keep that mystery going. And then our teachers are saying, they had to keep saying, well, you have to prove it, you have to prove it, you have to prove it. Um so they felt that they could, they could better pull the material down digitally. Um the, the material that they have, they can kinda give that to the students at their own pace to, to keep the story, a mystery, as long as possible.
Thank you. I missed that. I didn't see that about the lab information or the cost, but um thank you. That's really helpful. Um it went really quickly past what happened with not choosing to utilize it, but you're saying with just aligning to a middle school. I mean, I don't know what changed with fifth and sixth grade, that they didn't continue. So I feel like, are we sure that we have the teacher buy-in and like whatever concerns there might have been, have those been addressed?
So, so yeah, so a lot of the concerns, when we had, if, in the fifth and sixth grade bea- building, where there was a single science class ready to go as a part of that rotation, it didn't, mystery science didn't have really enough. The teachers had to supplement from other places to fill in that time. With the three-four-five building and the time that I think we're gonna have allotted, the mystery science will be better because it's, it's quicker, it's to the point, and it will fit better in the schedule for the students. So we'll be able to maximize that time of being able to give them the, the STEELS instruction that they need and not have it be too much, or not have it bogged down, but in the time that we, we think we're gonna have allotted as we're building the schedule.
Are you saying because they had the single class this year, it was almost too much time for what mystery science offers?
Correct.
And it's gonna be scaled back, so then it's the right amount of time?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Z. That the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the transfer of Ms. Nicole Norton from an instructional assistant at the Actuara Primary Learning Center to a temporary autistic support teacher at the Actuara Primary Learning Center effective April twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five through the remainder of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Ms. Norton's salary will be fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars prorated, which is step seventeen to max of the bachelor scale. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. AA, that the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the list of summer program employees effective July one through July twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. BB, that the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the following supplemental contract for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year pending completion of employee-related documents required by law and the district. Matt Hollab, assistant varsity girls soccer coach, six points at six hundred and twenty dollars each for a total of three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. CC, that the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the request for unpaid intermittent family medical leave for Ms. Kim Knightley effective April seven, two thousand twenty-five through October six, two thousand twenty-five. Ms. Knightley is a social studies teacher at the Actuara Area High School. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. DD, that the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the memorandum of understanding for each, oh, the memorandum, memorandum of understandings for each of the sending districts to the Actuara Homeland Security and Protective Services Academy. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. EE, that the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the Co-Stars proposal with Fry Lutz for ventilator removal and replacement at the Actuara Middle School at a cost of one hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Do we still have a middle school?
All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. FF, that the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the Co-Stars proposal with Fry Lutz for replacement of HVAC system in the middle school multipurpose room at a cost of eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Need a motion? Hey, better fix it soon, because it's hot in here.
So moved.
Any discussion? Guess we already did. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. GG, that the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the quote with Corbett Incorporated for classroom furniture at the Actuara Middle and High Schools not to exceed a cost of one hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred, ninety-six dollars and eleven cents. Need a motion? Need a motion? Any discussion?
Do we, have we gotten a cost yet?
I don't believe so. We haven't gotten an update on the cost from Corbett. So thirty thousand less? You're still working on them? Okay, little body blows.
All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. HH, that the Actuara Board of School Directors approve the contract with Campus Services Group for evening custodial services at a cost of seven hundred, seventy-one thousand, three hundred, thirty-four dollars and eleven cents. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, could I, I just wanna make a public note on that one. That seems like a real high number, but it's actually lower than it would be because of the elementary school realignment. I just wanna make that a note.
I think Scott, you said savings of forty-four thousand dollars over last year's contract? Thank you.
Good point. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. II, that the Actuar Board of School Directors approve the proposal with Berkshire Systems Group Incorporated for fire alarm testing and inspections effective seven-one, two thousand twenty-five through six-thirty, two thousand twenty-six at a cost of eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This one's gonna be hard to read. JJ, that the Actuara Board of School Directors accept the resignation of Dr. Stephen Lever as superintendent of schools effective July ten, two thousand twenty-five. Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So if we all vote no, the resignation's not official, right? That's been my argument the whole time about why do we even approve this?
Well, I have, I have a lot to say, but I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna save it till later, till closer to the, maybe the last meeting, so. I'll wrap it up for tonight. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. KK, board vacancy process discussion. I guess we need a motion to talk about it?
No, no, you just, it's just a, you're, you're not, you're not necessarily voting.
Okay.
But you may, if you, if there's a proposal for a motion.
Right, okay. Um I guess I'll, I'll start the discussion and, and throw something out there. I mean, obviously earlier this evening, we approved Mr. Falgittor's resignation, so there is an open board seat. That, that new member, so to speak, uh will serve approximately five months, you know, depending on the appointment. But assuming that's in May, uh through uh the election in November, so it's roughly five months. Depends how you do your math, but uh we do have an individual who is uh gone through all the process, paperwork process to get on the ballot. Uh his name is Mike Hoffman. He is from uh Region One, like Mr. Falgittor, so it seems like a pretty easy uh replacement. I make the suggestion that we appoint Mr. Hoffman to fill that seat uh until the general election. But certainly open for discussion.
Um I, so it's my opinion that we should um follow the process that we've done previously. There's a pretty good chance that Mike might be the only one who puts his name in the hat during that period. But you know, the, the seat that, the seat that Mike put his name in the ring for is Hillary's seat originally. And so there, there's a number of, could be, there, maybe there's not. But there could be a number of constituents that would have put their name in if they knew they weren't running against Hillary. So I think that that could have limited the pool of people that might be interested. And so I think it's, I think it's our service to the public to give people an opportunity to put their name in. If it's only Mike, great, we'll approve him and get him on the board, but if not, then we should follow the process that we've done before.
Well, obviously, I'm gonna take this moment to agree with Matt and disagree completely. This is an opportunity to do a pragmatic, simple, straightforward appointment, which is our right to do as a board. There's no process that's policy-driven, school code-driven. That's the nature of what we can do. And I think the odds of somebody wanting to step up and fill a seat for five months besides him are probably fairly remote. And we're just delaying. It'd be better to get him in, catch the tail end of the budget process, be part of a superintendent search that he's most likely gonna be working, you know, with in the coming months and for the length of his term. This is a no-brainer. And it seems ridiculous to put it out any further, in my opinion. You know, so I'd certainly be in favor of appointing him as soon as we're able to do so.
I'm okay with the appointing the one person that went through all the paperwork. I do think some justice is just in one interview with him, 'cause we never met him, just to get to know him a little bit, if we're going to appoint him. I have no problem with that being just him. But correct me if I'm wrong, can we reopen the application part for the election, though, that other people actually have? Is that even possible? Or do they all have to be write-ins by that point? They, okay, so we're past that completely.
Given the timeframe?
Yeah.
That everyone, this, other than Mr. Hoffman, who's on the ballot, uh I think everyone who would apply for that would be a write-in.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
I can live with an appointment as long as we actually just have a sit-down and just a quick interview, you know?
Just to clarify, there were two people who went through the process to be on the ballot for the one spot, and that is following Hillary going through a pretty rigorous process- And that is following Hillary going through a pretty rigorous process, um, that we had put in place for good reason. You know, we, we didn't say what's within our rights to do. We said what seems best to move forward in the best interest of our community, um, building up relationships of trust, um, to help us move forward in the healthiest way as a board, as a district. So we created that process for, for a good reason. And so with all the changes, um, I think that's something we can keep some consistency moving forward, um, is that process. Because it seems the fairest way to, um, have openness, transparency. We can maybe shorten it up. I understand the need to kind of keep things moving. There's not a need to prolong it with a lot of time, um, as we can work that out. But the process as it stands, where we open it up to where, Jay makes a really good point, that there were people who, if, if they would have felt like Hillary represents them well, they would have appreciated that she went before the judge and, and went through a really rigorous process, answered questions before the board, all of that, um, and let her be the one to run for that spot again. You know, I, I just feel obligated to give the opportunity for a voice, not saying there's people beating down the door to do that. But I just hate to think we would, um, cut that off, um, just for the sake of, I'm not, I'm not really sure what we gain by cutting that off. One less meeting for interviews, but I think even if for some reason we don't open it up, being able to have that person answer the same questions that everybody else who's recently gone through to answer those questions just makes sense to keep that consistency.
Well, obviously, we have a, a couple of members that aren't here tonight. Mr. Coniker and Mr. Zimmerman, I think they need to be part of the discussion. But I think we need, given that the constraints we're under, uh, limited meetings over the summer and everyone, the things that are happening, um, I, I think we need to be ready to, to have a discussion in, in, well, we need to have somebody appointed in May. Plus our timeframe, now that we've associated or, uh, accepted Tony's resignation, we have thirty days to fill the seat. Which, if I did my math right, our board meeting in May is like day twenty-seven, twenty-eight-ish. So we have to have the process resolved by that point.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but couldn't we do what we did last time, which is post a notice, have people apply by a certain date, whoever applies by that date, we could interview them at the work session next month? And then make a decision, if it's only Mike, then obviously that's a quick decision. You know, like, we don't need to delay the process further than that. Like, we could have interviews and a vote at the work session following the process that we've done the last two times that we've had an opening. I just think, and I want to be clear, I like, I don't, I don't know Mike. So my objection isn't to Mike as an individual. My objection is to cutting off anybody who may be interested, who wasn't willing to run because they didn't want to run against Hillary.
You, you do, you do understand that the odds of this person continuing beyond the election are probably ninety-nine percent not going to happen. The, the, the success rate of a write-in candidacy in the fall general election is like next to zero. Right? You understand that?
Well.
So somebody's going to have to fill a position for five months and then you're, 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 we talk about learning gaps and stuff over this. You know, we can, we have him right here in our room tonight. He can start the next meeting. You understand how the fall process works, right? Like, it will have to be a write-in candidacy. That is not going to happen in the general election.
Yes, Brian, I'm intelligent enough to know how the process works.
You certainly can see the idiocy.
And I'm also intelligent enough to know that we've done a process in the past.
But the process is, the, the, it's all.
I understand that.
It's all, it's all, depends on the situation.
But why would we change now, just so that we could cut out half the people who may be interested? Like, do you not understand that, that there are people who maybe wanted to run, but didn't because they didn't want to run against Hillary? Nobody knew when it was time for petitions that there was going to be two seats. Everybody assumed that there was one seat when the petitions were due. If we knew there were going to be two seats, I'd see your argument and I would concede.
There's, there's going to be two seats.
I understand.
There's two, there's going to be two names on the ballot, and then ballot's going to say, vote for not more than two, or vote for two.
In November.
In November.
I understand.
Are you sure?
I've clarified that once. If you want to keep coming at me, we can have a further conversation, but this is ridiculous.
This may be the reason why.
That you're attacking my intelligence.
Let's stop for one second, everybody take a breath. Okay, let, it's not, let this turn into more than it needs to.
If this ends up being a situation, despite the outcry from the superintendent, that this be, be more handled much more civilized, given the, given all the parameters that are before us, that we just simply just stated. That may be why we're having problems with, we have, we have three positions in the fall that we don't even have candidates for. I mean, is that a possibility? Like, nobody, nobody can work, just can't see how simple of an appointment this is? That it has to be this struggle is mind-numbing to me. It's frustrating beyond the pale. And I don't care if he was, he's the guy who's going to be on the ballot and who's going to win in the fall, just like Hillary. They're both going to win. I, I, with a hundred percent certainty, it'll be Mike Hoffman sitting in that chair, December first. Well, I say, let's put him in here right now. I, I, I can't, I can't imagine what the difficulty is in thinking that. At least Dan's approach is simple. Okay, fine, let's just have a little sit-down with him. This is a no-brainer. It is a no-brainer.
Go ahead, Jay. I, I have to agree with Brian. I, I think, given the situation, given the short term, and we make a lot of decisions in the next few months, having that, uh, a, a full board in that short amount of time with someone who's shown interest, uh, has attended meetings, come to a lot of different things, I think it just makes sense. And I don't think we're going to make a decision on it tonight, sounds like it. Uh, because obviously we need our two other board members here, but I think, uh.
Why, there's six of us here. We can vote and it can be done.
If we decide to have a vote, I think we need to, you're gonna have to help me out here.
We have to be a motion.
A motion to vote.
If there were a motion, the board could vote on a motion. So a motion to, uh, run the process as we had previously, or a motion to appoint, uh, to move forward with an appointment process with Mike.
Is there something in between we could figure out? I'm, I, I understand what Brian's saying. I, I logically concluded all of this myself. My only point is that no one in our community has heard from Mr. Hoffman. That's, that's all. I was just hoping we would have some sort of either interview or, um, just answering questions. I'm, fall somewhere in between the two places. It doesn't have to go through the whole belabored process, but also I'm not ready to commit to saying sight unseen, sure. That's, that's my.
Yeah, I don't know how it's so shocking to understand. We've been asked to approve someone who, who, who set themselves against Hillary, who was at this point where she's on and in the budget process, you know, and there was one seat available. And, and there is someone who set themselves against her, and we're being asked, I just want to make sure this is clear. What we're being asked to do is, is to approve that person without even hearing why it is that they put themselves in the running for that one spot. And, I mean, and the level of, you know, emotion over it, I think is very telling of, of, of maybe why and what we're being asked to do here.
Well, I, I will say, a, as, you know, if someone's running for the board, that, and it's through the general election, we don't have any interview process before they show up. I, I understand what we've done before, and we were in a different situation then. But I think, again, I know I'm repeating myself, given the situation, given what's assuredly going to happen in the fall, I, I think it just makes, uh, sense to appoint Mr. Hoffman.
Would you feel more comfortable, when he's here, asking him some questions? Would that satisfy you?
Not, not right now. Not prepared to interview right now.
So is, is there a motion on the table from anyone on the process we should take? Is there a motion on the table on the process we should take, process we should follow? Maybe, that's a better way of saying it. I'll make the motion that we appoint Mr. Hoffman as soon as possible.
And that as soon as possible includes an interview?
Yes. So we have a motion to appoint Mike Hoffman with an interview next month. We have a second. So any discussion on that motion?
I'll second that.
So all those in favor of that motion to appoint Mike Hoffman and have an interview with him in the public at the next work session? All those in favor of that say aye? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
I think that means motion carries. So, we'll put that on the agenda for next month. Next is the Policy Committee report. Ms. Metzler.
Okay, Policy Committee met here in this room at six o'clock this evening. Uh, we had the second reading of, um, policies that were recommended by the PSBA. One oh-three, discrimination harassment affecting students. Policy one oh-four, discrimination harassment affecting staff. Policy two thirty-four, pregnant parenting married students. And policy three thirty-nine, uncompensated leave. And then I don't know that this one came from PSBA, but the eight twenty-four, maintaining professional adult student boundaries. There was no changes from their recommendations that mostly include updating some terminology. A big thank you to Jill. We are, um, kind of restarting what I believe was done before, where we will go through a review process of our policies, um, beginning with those that are the furthest away from having been reviewed. So that list of policies started right at the beginning with zero, 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 board policy procedure administrative regulations. Zero, zero, one, naming classification, um, policy two, authority and powers. Number three, functions. Number four, membership. Then there were some that have had a more recent review, but then zero, zero, seven, policy manual access. Um, and then two thirty-five point one, surveys, um, is one that we looked at. So out of those being reviewed, we could decide to make changes, and then they would come through the process with a first and second reading for any changes that are recommended. So, um, you can be looking at, at that section of policies that will be reviewed, see if any changes are desired or any discussion, and we'll move it through the process. But, um, we also had an update on, policy seven oh-seven has been in discussion about facility use. And at our last board meeting, um, delegated a subcommittee for facility use, um, Hillary, Dan, and myself. Thanks to Greg for meeting with us. Um, thank you to Brittany Howe for her work in, um, preparing a lot of, um, information for us. It was really a productive meeting to just, um, get to have direct communication about something we've been receiving questions about from the community. Really, it came down to just wanting to reiterate the process. Greg and Brittany have put the policies, um, application for facility use, they've put that online using Brightly. Um, and it, it does match. And so I think it's just putting the information out there to the public, um, that there, it does include an option to put a request for waiver in that would come before the board. And so any of our community, community organizations are welcome to do that. There's a way to submit your letter to the board on that online form, and, um, it'll come before us. And we're willing to hear, you know, it, it asks for some justification of, of why it seems like the fees should be waived or altered based on your use, um, your program's use. So, um, any community organization can feel free to fill that out, submit that, to have it come before the board for approval. Um, to varying degrees, it doesn't even have to be an all or nothing, um, approval of, of waiving all the fees or a portion of it, that kind of thing. So with that process in place, we're leaving policy seven oh-seven and the fee schedule, um, the fee structure as it is. And that's the Policy Committee update.
Thank you. Next, uh, Finance Committee report. Mr. Loeb.
So the Finance Committee met earlier tonight in this building. Uh, we did a, uh, year-over-year review of our budget. It was, uh, and so, um, we talked about how we've received about so, uh, three million in grants so far this year, uh, which has helped with some of the expenses that we've had. Um, and we're expecting to come in with a surplus again at the end of the year, um, which we kind of, uh, budgeted for. Uh, the second thing is we reviewed the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which we reviewed, uh, earlier in this meeting. So it was the same, uh, budget review that, uh, that you all sat through earlier. Uh, we reviewed the Signal eighty-eight proposal, uh, for security. Uh, we're renewing that for, um, one more year, I think is the contract that we extended. We, uh, also, uh, listened to a proposal from Deva Park Consulting, um, which, um, kind of preliminary discussions on, you know, how we can recapture, um, you know, some charter school planning. Um, you know, recapture some of the students that have left for charter schools. Uh, we reviewed a summary of projects with the ten-year feasibility plan that we've been, uh, reviewing over the last several months. Um, we also, uh, reviewed the contract with Herbine, uh, for our auditing services. I believe, uh, that'll be on the agenda for next month to approve. And then we were also made aware of a couple of grants that we were applying for. One, uh, was a grant to help with, uh, potentially our geothermal project that, uh, we're looking to do. And also, uh, some money to help with the water tank, uh, that we're in the process of doing.
Thank you. Next, CCIU Board Rep Report. Mr. Norris.
Yeah, we met, uh, April sixteenth down at, uh, Brandywine. The, uh, the highlights of the meeting were, uh, the, uh, we had a, a presentation on the Chester County Labor Market and how it's impacting, um, some of the competition uh, in ed- education, in particular special education settings. Um, the IU's had some success in recruiting, uh, and retaining, uh, PCA's or personal care assistants. They've incentivized things such as a sign-on bonus and referral bonuses, uh, which has, which has helped. And the other thing that's kind of neat, and I wonder if, if we have one of the same type of situation, uh, CRES, uh, is covering the clearance, uh, fee cost, which is a hundred and twenty-five bucks. So that's, that's a nice thing that we learned about. Along those lines, we also heard, uh, about the needs, how the needs have increased, uh, with, through IEPs, and things like that, uh, over the years. And that the IU is working strategically to, uh, meet those needs, uh, countywide. Um, we also learned from the, uh, Krista Fazio, she's the communications and marketing, uh, coordinator, talking about some of the projects and, and events that the IU puts on, uh, science fair, spelling bees, uh, reading Olympics, uh, Shakespeare festivals and much more. The, they reach over thirty-four hundred, uh, kids with that. Another program that I, I've told you about here in the past, but we had another update about it, was their, um, the CCIU's leadership program, development program, where they take, uh, staff uh, and coach them up to, for leadership roles and things like that within the, uh, organization. And, uh, it's had quite an impact, uh, in, in many facets of their organization, uh, morale and, and whatnot. And, um, so that's something, uh, that, again, a local district may want to consider for their own. And those were the highlights as that they, that would be of interest to us.
Thank you. Don't believe we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Other items and announcements?
The moment you've all been waiting for, I'd like to show you our kindergarten video. Thank you, Joey. They're, they're just sick with anticipation. So Beth Trapani, we have, um, we've been working with Beth on communications. Uh, video is something she's talked about. It's a very powerful medium. Uh, particularly short videos, this one's a minute long, something that we can use in social media and on our website. Uh, we have a vision for how we can use video to communicate better with our community about, uh, what we're doing, what opportunities there are for students. And so Joey, I think it's safe to play that all the way through the full minute this time.
Kindergarten enrollment is open in the Actora Area School District. Kindergarten is where the journey begins with curiosity, care, and connection. Kindergarten is where the journey begins with curiosity, care, and connection.
Kindergarten is such a special time because I feel like the students make the most growth throughout the year. And they come in and they are wide-eyed and they are curious about learning.
The sooner you enroll, the sooner we can reserve your child's place in our school community.
We will love your child. We will work with them. We're going to learn who they are to support them.
I hope that when a student leaves here at the end of the day, they are excited to come back tomorrow.
Small class sizes, big growth. Individual attention for your child and their unique needs. Register today for kindergarten in the Octorera Area School District. Your child's future starts here.
Yeah. So in the finance meeting, Chris Selmer from Deva Park talked about what are our points. And I, I think what we want to do with our charter school kids, we want to invite them to come back and be a part of our programs. Kindergarten is one of those, is one of those places where we see a lot of students who don't, who don't enter our kindergarten. And so what we want to explore is, is kind of where are those on-ramps and off-ramps for students? And, and then how do we, how do we get the message out of the things that happen in our schools that, that we think that our community should A) be proud of and B) that we really want to trumpet because we want, we want kids that live in this community, they ultimately are the ones that are, their families are investing in our school system. And so this is part of a strategy that we have put in place to explore communication. And this is kind of the beginning. It's a snapshot. Imagine 30-second to one-minute clips of all of our CTE programs. And, you know, programs that take place in the school and processes and athletics that we could use on our website and push out into social media. So this is a glimpse of hopefully more to come on how we talk about our district for the community. Any thoughts?
I have a question.
Yep.
The IU portion of the State of the District presentation, how long, when's that anticipated to be completed?
Well, we haven't approved it yet. I would be, it's something we really need to do. They're going to, we're going to pay them to do it. I don't think we could do it for a lot less with printing and all of the things that we would have to do, bring in specialists. So we would, we, our hope is to have that ready by the end of the summer to roll out. And part of that is also eight videos that would be, I don't know that they would be exactly like this, but eight videos that would also help to tell the story of Octorera and where we are. So I, I've missed, I've missed this meeting to be able to get your approval, but I would really like to begin that process, even if it means more formally we approve it later. Because it's, we need an annual report to go to the community of some kind. I want it to be more than an annual report. I'd like it to be a State of the District because the district is very healthy. There are a lot of exciting things going on. We've been able to do this through a lot of hard work from a lot of people that are in this room. And, and I think, I think we owe it to the community to be able to report to them, this is, this is where we are and these are the things we're proud of. Probably the fall, Mr. Patika. Probably the fall. I don't know if we can do all of it right now. So, but I'm pushing.
I think it's a step in the right direction. Something like that out on the website or viewed in the community, I think would go very well. Anybody else? Okay, next on the agenda is visitors' comments in general. Just please state your name and municipality.
It's my first meeting. Am I on? Okay. I am also a former special education teacher and administrator, and so I'm here as an educator, having worked in the system as well. But I'm here today representing Dragonfly's Indivisible Group to urge you to adopt the Safe Schools Resolution. Every child deserves to learn in an atmosphere safe from fear. Right now, immigration enforcement is creating a climate of anxiety and instability. Parents are afraid to allow their children to come to schools. Students are upset and unable to focus. The Safe Schools Resolution offers a powerful solution to make schools a safe haven. By prohibiting the collection of immigrant information and setting clear protocols for ICE requests, this resolution protects children while upholding state and federal laws. This resolution is not about shielding those who have committed crimes. If ICE presents a signed judicial warrant, schools will comply as required by law. This resolution is about due process and to ensure there is no unnecessary stress or fear placed on our families, especially the children. By passing the resolution, you would be affirming that our school stands with each student, no matter their background, and demonstrates that our district values safety, inclusion, and the right to education. We ask you to support the Safe Schools Resolution and join a growing number of districts across the country, taking a stand for their students. Thank you for your time and commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Move on to Administrator Comments or Announcements.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, PSSA testing begins tomorrow, so we hope all of our students get a good night's sleep tonight and come in energized. I also want to recognize some students who last month had the opportunity to participate in the annual Lancaster-Lebanon Elementary STEM Bowls. And they are fast-paced quiz, quiz-style competitions, complete with buzzers. They're designed to showcase and apply third, fourth, and fifth grade students' knowledge of science, technology, engineering, and math. The event consists of two components, matches in which each team of four students competes against another team to answer a series of toss-up questions and bonus questions. And then there is a hands-on design and problem-solving activities that are presented by the IU 13 Student Services Team. So last month, we had third-grade students Goldie Brindle, Elliot Davis, Alex Kleimer, and Anna Kazakian attended the Mini STEM Bowl. And that included three 15-minute matches and one STEM design. They were competitive in each of their matches, and the hands-on design required them to build a gingerbread house with specific criteria regarding the structure, unique ideas, and creativity. Their design focused on safety, eye-and-finger identification to enter, and a fun, they included a rooftop pool. And then the next day, our fourth and fifth grade students Nathan Campos, Eli King, Seamus Ralston, Audrey Sowers, Merritt Zavaki, Gavin Bowen, Ryan Mittman, and Piper Pine attended the STEM Bowl, and this included six 20-minute matches and two STEM designs. They also were very competitive in their matches, and for the hands-on design, they also built a gingerbread house for one design, and they created a bridge for another, designed a bridge. The beam bridge, which included creative graffiti, was voted to be the favorite by the 19 teams which participated that day. So all of our kids had a great experience doing that, and we're very proud of them. Thank you.
So in our CTE program, each of the programs are aligned with a student organization. Tomorrow, beginning tomorrow and ending Friday, our engineering students Sebastian Hess, Dan Bishop, Liam Montgomery, Zach Thompson, Connie Bowers, and Stowe Wilson will compete at Seven Springs Ski Resort in one of six different competitions. CAD 3D Engineering, I've practiced this word a couple times tonight, extemporaneous speaking. Thank you. Structural Design and Engineering, Technology Problem Solving, Webmaster Design, and the Technology Bowl. We're really excited about their competition coming up. They had to qualify through a regional competition, and all six students qualified for the, for that, for the state testing or the state competition. So we're super excited for them. Can't wait to find out how they do. Homeland, just to kind of bring everyone up to speed, they're going to be presenting students or their cadets next week at the Education Committee Meeting. May 1st, we have our last of our burn days. That will be the, I believe, the final module in their fire certification. We're super excited for that. We are trying for the first time ever a potluck with the parents. The parents have never, ever, of all the, I guess throughout the history of this program, have never seen their kids perform at the training campus. So we're really excited. The parents are organizing a potluck. Everyone's coming down and they're going to watch the kids work through their modules or their certifications. So we're super excited about that and the food that they're going to provide. So that's cool. They graduate May 29th, so we'll have the graduation down at the Public Safety Training Campus in Coatesville, which is a wonderful event. If you've never been, you're more than welcome to attend. Begins at 12:00 PM. The fire department's actually drive the students into the village. And it's, it's a wonderful display. So we're really excited about that. And then OA Best is May 17th, 2025. It's going to be from 9:30 to 1:30. We have a number of different new vendors that will be there. I think we secured tarantulas, snakes, and all sorts of different things. Yeah, well, so am I, but I think the kids will love it. So we have a number of different, different activities for the students this year. Thank you.
So a couple of things. We're, we're marching forward with our realignment process. You approved a whole bunch of the transfers. That's the first round of transfers. We have another round that will be coming probably next month. As positions open, there's additional people who, who want to seek those positions. So that's going, that's going quite well. We've had lots of meetings around timing and what needs to happen. We approved some furniture. That's a first stage. We were looking at OIS today, at changing some spaces and what are the needs and counting desks. And Dr. Taha is going to have a completely different building until we're all done. Just, just the feel of an elementary building is, is different than a 5-6 building. And so we're excited for that. Last, last week, we had the physics students here. And two of the students, the first one in line and the third one in line, have made the, what is in effect the national team for physics, international physics competition. And they will be traveling, what did he say, Sweden? Sweden, I think he said? And so I'm sure that we, last year, we had the dilemma because we had three students that were on that team. And we had the dilemma of whether we could help fund them. We've worked on a bit of a process this year so that we have some guidance for how we can do that. But that's, that's a, that's a tremendous, tremendous thing. It is really an east coast is where we draw most of the students from, although I think there was one from California last year. So we, we say it's a national team. It's a national team in the sense that, that any students in the country can, can apply to be a part of this, but we're, we're quite well-connected. And Doc McWaters really, really ushers our kids along in a way that they are positioned very well to be able to get this incredible opportunity. And those students go on, the three students from last year are all studying physics of some kind and in, in very high-level programs. And I think we heard that one of them is going to study a science, but the, the other one maybe is not. So we'll see. They'll, we'll get to meet them again. But we're excited, we're excited to have two students on that team again. I, I just want to comment quickly about the work that we've done. You know, the, the two years that I've been here, which is just, is really far too short for me. There, there's so many things that have been done, but very little of it has been by me. It's by the people that we have on our team. You know, we have, we have tried to institutionalize mission and vision. For those of you who can see, they're, they're displayed there. The thing that I've tried to relay to our team is the, the mission and vision is not any one person's. They don't possess that. That should be something that drives us as an organization. And the things that we put in place, the intention of putting things in place is so that they will go forward regardless of who's leading. You put, you put processes and systems in place so that we can continually improve. And we have done, we have done exceptionally well, in my estimation, with the people that we've brought in to help us do this. Our principals, when I, when I hear our principals stand in front of you and talk, I, I literally get emotional with how good they are. And I, it was a couple of months ago at an education committee, and three of them had spoken. And I remember thinking, I don't care where I'm working, I'm hiring those three people. And that's, that's who you have in your district. And I just, I could not be more proud of the team and the work they're doing. I have never seen a group of teachers embrace something like Dr. Schultz has rolled out to them in math and in science and, and in ELA. It's not to say it's the best implementation anywhere. It's just to say in my 36 years, I've never seen teachers embrace it the way the Octorera teachers do. And that is a testament to the way Chris works with them, but it's more a testament to our teachers and their willingness to grow, their willingness to take on hard things, their willingness to set aside past practice for the benefit of our kids. And so we are, we are in a really, really good place. I, I don't know what role, if any, I can play in helping to find the next person who will lead, but there's a lot of pride with what's, with what's happening here. Academics take a long time to turn around. If you, if you go for quick hitters, you can get them, but it's always at the cost of something else. I'm, I'm really excited to see how our kids, now we won't know until the summer, how they do on a really, I'm just going to say this for the community, a really bad state test. My dissertation is in state tests, and I'm not a fan of them. I think we put too much emphasis on one indicator. And when you put any, too much emphasis on one indicator, it becomes less reliable as an indicator. So I much prefer to have PSSA and MAP and local assessment data and other things. And using all of those things together gives us a true picture of where our kids are. Mr. Patika popped into my office today like he does every day, and he, he always has some, something that lifts me up. And today's was, our kids are getting hired. And, and what he was telling me about was how our CTE kids, who are not necessarily college-bound, but they're already securing jobs in April that they will be going into. And that is, that is very much what we want to see with our CTE kids, for them to be able to go into gainful employment in an area that they have been working in. So just want to encourage everybody. Let's, let's stay the course on our mission and vision. That's not something that is any one person's. That is, that is ours as a community to walk forward. And I, I said when I got here, and I'll say it now, Octorera's best days are still to come. They're, they're not in the past. They're, they're still out in front of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. We'll open it up to Board Comments. Any Board Comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to clarify that the two students, their names are Val Wakeman and Bridgette Whitfield. And then I also wanted to say that prom tickets go on sale the 20, 28th, 29th, and 30th. And then our prom is May 30th.
Thank you. I froze when Dr. Propper wasn't here. I didn't think to put you on the spot, but thank you.
Board Comments?
Yeah, I apologize. I don't have the date in front of me. I had my IU thing. The Legislative Breakfast is coming up, May 9th?
May 9th.
May 9th. And specifically, they want to invite the student reps this year. They're trying to get, so if you can manage that to go, that would be awesome.
It's not May 9th. Just a minute. I'm not 100% certain it's May 9th, but it's in that week. I will, I will connect with you.
I emailed somebody who should know, and they haven't gotten back to me. So if I get that before we leave, I will.
I'll take a moment to thank the art department for K-6. They just do a really spectacular job with the art show. It just turns into a really wonderful community event, but just showcasing the hard work of all the students. And it's just such a great picture of just the uniqueness and creativity of students. creativity of students. And so I just really appreciate all the work they poured into that for not just the students, but really for all the community that came out to see it. So big thanks to them. There is more to say and other things. This feels like a really small question, and I apologize, I wasn't here to ask all my questions in the work session last week. I also had a question about tutoring, so Wanda Lap Tutoring. I just wanted to, with approving it, clarify for people that if it's approved, is there anything the public needs to know about who that's available to and how anyone can access it? Does anybody have any information about what that looks like or how people can access what we approved? Okay.
We will get that information for you.
Might just help, I, just as we, you know, have those resources there, I just want to make sure we link to making sure people know about that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Move on, I'll announce the following meetings. The Policy and Finance Committee meeting Tuesday, April twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, six PM in the middle school multipurpose room. There will be an executive session for legal, personnel, and security on Tuesday, April twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, after the regular meeting in room one oh two of the middle school. Education Committee meeting, or yeah, will be Monday, April twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, six PM in the middle school hub. Facility Committee meeting, Monday, May twelve, twenty-twenty-five, six PM in the middle school multipurpose room. Next regularly scheduled work session, Monday, May twelve, twenty-twenty-five, seven PM in the middle school multipurpose room. Policy and Finance Committee meetings, Monday, May nineteen, twenty-twenty-five, six PM in the middle school multipurpose room. Next regularly scheduled board meeting, Monday, May nineteen, twenty-twenty-five, seven PM in the middle school multipurpose room. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Second, meeting adjourned. Thank you.